Okay.
All right.
And we're live.
All right, so we are at the July 14th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Lansing. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Looks like we have all of our regular members, so we do not need to enact the alternate. But Mary, please stay involved in all of the conversations. We'll call roll call for attendance. Maureen Cowan here. Richard Hayes.
Yes.
Needs to on, yeah, unmute.
Isn't unmuted.
Is it unmuted?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, I didn't.
Okay. Pete Larson?
Here.
Melanie Malone?
Here.
Okay. Mary Stone?
Here.
Judy Drake here. Melanie, you're going in and out a little bit when you talk, so. Okay, so our. I understand that. If I blip out, that's why I'm. I'll come back quickly, I promise. So our first order business will be to consider the June 9th, 2020 minutes. Is there somebody who would like to move the minutes? Throw a hand, something?
I moved to mid, to accept.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there somebody who'd like to second the minutes?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Rick. Is there any changes, corrections that should be noted? I didn't see, I didn't see any. Okay, so though, all those in favor of approving June 9th, 2020 minutes, say aye.
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 Hey. Any opposed? Great, all right. So we will move on on our agenda to our public hearing. Please email TOLCodes@lancetown.com if you would like to have something read out loud tonight. Our public hearing is going to be held electronically via conference call Zoom instead of a public meeting open for the public to attend in person on the following matter. Consideration of an appeal made by Robert Marcus, applicant and owner of 200 Cedar Cove Tax Parcel Number 37 dot one dash six dash nine, located in the Lakeshore L1 zoning district for two area variances from the town of Lansing Land Use Ordinance Section 504 Schedule B, which requires a 10-foot minimum rear yard setback and a 30-foot front yard from Kuga Lake setback. Applicant is requesting an area variance of 9.5 feet from minimum rear yard setback requirement and an area variance of 23 foot to facilitate placement of a 12 by 16-foot gambrel paddlecraft structure. Hope I'm saying that right. Town of Lansing Land Use Ordinance Section 504 Schedule 2 also requires structures less than 30 feet from shoreline to be subject to a site plan review, which is scheduled for the July 27th, 2020 planning board meeting. The structure is located in the A3 area of special flood hazard and is also subject to the flood damage prevention and flood plain management and construction local law. This is a type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Members of the public may listen to or view the zoning board of appeals live meeting or recorded on the town's YouTube channel and documents are available for inspection. All interested parties or representative thereof will be given an opportunity to be heard and you can send in comments to the town of Lansing Planning and Code Enforcement Department, 29 Auburn Road, Lansing, New York, 14882, or codes, TOLCodes@lancetown.com. In your statement, be forward to the zoning board of appeals for their consideration. If you want your statement read out loud, please state that in your letter or email and the meeting will be transcribed and posted on the town website. Okay. So I need a motion to open the public hearing. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we open.
Okay. Melanie, second?
Yeah.
Rick moves, moves. Melanie, second? CJ, is this a roll call?
You established who was there at that time, but to open the public hearing, yeah, it doesn't hurt to do a roll call again.
Okay. Okay, especially with being on a Zoom meeting. So all those in favor, Maureen Cowan?
Here, yes.
Rich, Richard Hayes?
Yes.
Peter Larson?
Yes.
Melanie Malone?
Yeah.
And Judy Drake, yes. So do you want to bring the applicant into the?
The board like to admit the applicant first and have them speak to the board?
Okay. Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Okay, yes. So. And I'll turn my video off, save some bandwidth here.
Okay. So Bob, welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight via Zoom for our zoning board meeting. We would like to, at this time, see if there's anything that you would like to discuss with us. And just so you know, once I do close the public comment period and bring it back to the board for discussion, you can participate if, if, if we ask you questions at that time, okay? If there's anything that you'd like to point out to us, this would be the time to do that. So I will turn it over to you and you can kind of explain what you're asking for.
Sure. What we're trying to do is, I think I wrote about in the application, is we're trying to put a shed up on our waterfront. We have about 350 feet of waterfront along Kayuga Lake in Lansing. We have a retaining wall that puts the height at around 386, the base. We're proposing raising that a bit so that we're well above the flood zone. We have now, I've got three kids and we haven't really been using our place very much. Go camping there a lot, but not on a daily basis. We just haven't had the infrastructure. Given all that's going on in COVID and given the ages of my kids, we went out and bought some paddleboards and kayaks and all that good stuff and then realized pretty quickly what a schlep it was to take those things from the sheds that we do have, which are far up the hill, down and back on a near daily basis. And so we'd like to put a shed on a spot we used to have a shed at. And something where we can store it during the summer and maybe over the winter, out of the sun and securely. And hoping that that will meet your approval. You know, we're obviously property owners and care about the lake and care about the environment and feel like we've designed something that's safe and certainly within reason, certainly understand that we need a variance to put it where we're putting it. But feel like we've explored all the other options and there's none really that are workable. So we're hoping that you'll approve.
And the shed size is what is necessary for all the.
Yeah, so the, the paddleboards are 11.6 feet long. We have a canoe that's 14 feet long. We have a sunfish that is really deteriorating because it's been outside, kind of on the shoreline. It's too heavy to kind of get up and down the hill in the winter and put it anywhere. So we leave it covered in the tarp. Tarp usually blows off at some point. It's flooded a number of times and so it's really damaging the boat. That is about for almost 15 feet long, 14 something. And so, yeah, it feels like that we, we made it the minimum size that we could, but the size that we needed to be able to store all those materials.
Okay. I'll open it up to the board. Any, and board members have questions for Bob?
Hi, Bob. It's Pete.
Maureen?
No, I'll go ahead, Pete.
Thanks, Maureen. Can you talk a little bit about why this is the only feasible spot to put this building?
Sure. So we have a, like a lot of people on this shoreline, we have the railroad that runs right along the top of the ridge. They have a 33-foot approximately setback from that. The way our property goes, there's a hill down to where the, the property of the railroad is. It's a pretty steep grade. It's hard to even get vehicles up and down. It's a 15 degree, maybe 20 degree grade. And so there's no real way to kind of even, we thought about like, well, maybe we just buy a truck of some court or little UV or whatever those vehicles are to schlep it back up and forth. The sheds that we have are back over the old railroad road that runs, that there's an easement to people to our north. So we have to be off that easement and then there's another hill. And so really the first place you get to is, I think it's 300 feet up from the railroad. We have stairs. The stairs are to the northern boundary of our property. So from where we would put in and take out the kayaks, for instance, we'd have to then walk to the north, walk up 17-foot embankment with the stairs and walk all the way to the south part of our property and then walk up a series of hills. And so there really doesn't, there's not a feasible place to put a shed closer. I mean, there, there, there is a flat area that we could put a shed, but it would really be in the middle then of our views of the lake from the cabin that we have. And it would only cut off another kind of two hills and, and probably a 200 feet or 150 feet.
Let's see, I was curious because on the site plan that I received, it looks like it could go north, but you're saying that's really just an inconvenience.
Yeah, so those are actually woods, the, where it says other lands of Robert Marcus, that's actually, you can't see the topography of that, but it's a hill that goes down to the creek where you see the culvert. There's a water creek. It's an unnamed creek. The southern portion of our property is on Morrow Creek, which we have like three quarters a mile of. The creek that goes through that 48-inch culvert, that's kind of a wooded hillside. I also, that would interrupt the views of our neighbors, the Moscaus to the north, and we have no intention of doing that. So that, we have to go kind of north where it, in the southern piece of this where it says dilapidated steps. We have to basically go pretty close to that before you turn back up into our property.
But the, the shed, as it's shown on the site plan, is toward the southern sort of sliver of the beachfront.
Correct.
And I was curious why it can't go to the north of that, up, still down at the beach.
I actually think it's safer. I would be uncomfortable putting it where the, the other shed is, is up on stilts and above the, the line. But it, water comes up right to it. And at some point, I think we're going to take it down. It's making me uncomfortable with the lake, the lake getting high more often than it used to. We've got water coming up to 384, 385 sometimes. So if we, if we put it further to the north where we have room, we could cut into the hillside, we could do a lot of things. We don't have a retaining wall there. So the retaining wall stops, you'll see where the words say timber break wall.
Yeah.
Just, I don't know, six feet in front of, to the north of that is where the timber break wall ends. And so it felt safer. I'm trying to put it behind the break wall because it feels to me like the safest place to go.
Okay.
The water in the, in the 24 years we've had that break wall, the water has never come close to breaching that. It's come up to the break wall, but never over the break wall.
I see. Thank you.
Yep. I'm sorry, Maureen, did you?
Yo, sorry, let me get my, pulled out my plugs here. Okay, so I live just south of this property, so I had the.
South of the Alexanders or?
Yes, I live at 699 Lansing Station Road.
Sure, sure.
So I have walked the track to take a look and I've paddled up there to take a look.
Sure.
And indeed, because I live here, I do know the limitations of living along the lake and narrow, very narrow water fronts.
Yep.
And the railroad track, the whole thing is inconvenient. However, having said that, I'm wondering if you considered other types of options for storing your equipment? Because many people have.
Yep.
Kayak, canoe racks, et cetera.
Yep.
And they do cover them. They do have roofs over them, some of them. I have a neighbor that just built one.
Yep.
Not ideal, but it does make another option.
Of course, I'm sorry to interrupt. Of course, and, and we've explored that extensively and that was a much cheaper option as well. And during these times, that was a much more attractive option at first. What the, the real challenge is, is that it's hard to, given the direction of our property, it's hard to ensure that those things are in shade. In fact, they're not in shade. Even when you put a roof over it, the ones in back may be shaded somewhat. But in the summer, they're not really in shade and these paddleboards will deteriorate much faster in sunlight than not. There's also a question of security of those things and while, you know, it's, you know, you can find ways to lock all those things up, we're not living here and so we're not down here very much. I mean, we're, we're down on the weekends, we're down at a week at a time, but there's also long stretches of time that we're not here. And so we were hoping to find a way to put them truly, to make them secure so that we would have kind of the peace of mind that it was locked up and fully out of the sunlight. Clearly, if you guys aren't going to approve this, then we'll find another option. We do have to keep them off the beach. We have to find some way not to schlep them up and down. But it's a, it's a much poorer option than it would be to have a shed.
So, so my next question is, as options go, is it possible to make it narrower than 12 feet and longer? I mean, I hear you saying that you want 12 feet, but.
Yeah, right.
Just wondering if that's a possibility.
Yep. So with the number of kids we have and the number of boats we have, we really need more than one rack. So at first we were looking at eight foot wide and then realized we would have to make it so high that it would be hard to actually grab boats off and we wouldn't be able to get eight different boats inside a shed. The 12 by 16, we felt was the minimum we could do to, to get all that stuff in. Could we make 10 feet work, 10 feet wide work? Yeah, we could probably make 10 feet wide work. Much less than that, it's, we're not going to be able to get the boats in the shed. We won't be able to get all the boats in the shed. So between two kayaks, four paddleboards, a canoe, sailboat and likely at some point, one more kayak, it would be hard to fit all that stuff in something much more narrow than 10 feet.
And one more question, the back, the back wall of this waterfront, is that shale or is it railroad granite crush, granite material?
Yeah, sure. This, where this is, is the transition from the railroad crush to the shale. I think I'd have to really stare at the picture. Let's see if I have one. But I'm reasonably sure it's mostly the fixed cliff, which we have had borings done in past to look at different options. And it's a pretty solid cliff that's been stable for 25 years. This is not the crusher run. The crusher run is where the word cord goes, where it starts to really turn to the south southwest. That's the railroad crusher run.
Okay, because that shale is constantly moving. I know from living, you know, we have.
Sure. Ours have been, we have a fair number of trees there. It's been pretty remarkably stable in the 25 years that we've had this place.
Okay. And of course, the height of your seawall is, is not that high compared to how high the water gets down there.
As I said, I've lived there 25 years. We've never had water crested. It's, it's come up to the base of it. In fact, you can see a water line on the probably third rail up. But it's never come to the top of the wall. And we've, our dock is also at the same height and while the water's come up near the top of the dock, it's never crested the dock.
Okay. I know it has down where I am, so it depends. Everybody has different levels.
It is. Our dock is ridiculously high, unfortunately, which, you know, we put it there because the wall was there and because people scared me when I first bought the place about the 100-year flood, so we.
It does happen.
It, oh, it does. I'm sure it does. Yeah, and the last couple of years, it's been getting worse, so I'm cognizant of that as well. Look, we really considered whether this was the best option. We, again, you know, we, we camp out here. This is not a place, we're not trying to build an Airbnb. We're not trying to build, you know, for now, a house that's year-round. We're really trying to just enjoy the minimum footprint we can. And we, we looked at all the options. This felt like the minimum footprint for a way to store the boats that would be safe. But, you know, obviously it's your decision, not ours.
So, so the other platforms that you have up above, those are?
Those are tent platforms, seasonal tents. And we just did that in order to be able to, you know, basically be down there a lot more in the next two summers that we're anticipating. So there, there are 14 by 16-foot platforms with, that'll have tents on them. Yep. We, we're not, we're, this was not a place to build a McMansion. This was a place to be outdoors, so we're outdoors, folks.
Thank you.
Yep, no, thank you for the questions.
Other questions? Melanie, do you want to go over some of the ones we've been chatting here?
I don't know if you can hear me well enough, but what is the height of the shed? What is just under 12 feet? What's the exact measurement?
Sure, I, I think we were.
Our length is based, based on.
Now I am having trouble hearing you. I'm sorry.
She could chat.
Okay, let me pull up the chat here, sorry.
So one, one of her questions is, what is just under? Shouldn't we have an exact measurement?
Yeah, that's probably be helpful. Let me just see if I can pull up the plans that be.
Looking at the shed plan.
Yeah, I think the peak of the roof is supposed to be at 12 feet. So off of 387, what we wanted to do was make sure it was well below the, the top of the tracks, which are four, like 403. I think, let me just look, 403, yep. And so the idea was to have the crest of the root, of the roof of the shed be at 399, to be below 400. Oh, there you are. Yeah. So the height of the roof would be 399.
I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not trying to understand what that means in relation to the, the 12 feet. The 12 foot area.
So as best I can understand, the, if the, the base elevation is at 387, the, the first floor elevation is at 387, you add 12 feet to the crest of the gambrel roof, which is actually just the crest part, not the main part of the roof, but the crest of the roof, would be 12 feet above that, which would put it at basically 399 elevation, if you're measured the elevation at 399. The top of the cliff behind it is at essentially 403 of the, maybe a little higher actually, but let's just say it's at 403. So if you're standing on top of the cliff, you look straight out, if you were like putting your face down on the ground, you would still see the lake. The crest of the roof would be below the, the top of the embankment. Did I answer the question? I don't know if I did.
I think, I think what they're trying to ask is, what is the height of the building itself?
I, I grew up in the construction business. My father was a builder. I, I'm always skeptical when people give me an exact height of anything. So part of it is that that's kind of my, my knee jerk is to never say it's this. But what I'd be happy to commit to is it will not be more than 12 feet.
Does that change anything with it being 12 feet?
To qualify for a 10-year, less than 12 feet to qualify for 10-foot yard setback.
But the setbacks can be.
Got it.
Less because of the size of the structure.
Got it. I understand. Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Okay, that makes sense. If you, got it. So if we ensure that it's 11 feet or 11 and a half feet, something below 12, then we've got more ability for a setback. We're applying for a variance, the rear yard setback. I mean, that's one of the things CJ, you and I talked about was what in fact is the setback? Is it the front versus the rear versus the side?
Right, okay, so we can take a look at the site plan, if it would help visualize any of this. And any of the other drawings here, I mean, let's just bring this up here. So this is the applicant's memo regarding the 12-foot by 16-foot shed. That would be a height of just under 12 feet. And here is the proposed location. And so it's difficult to discern side lot lines from here, but you can see that it's required to have 10 feet from the rear and it's showing a half a foot there and then structures from the lake must be 30 feet to the lake. So rather than getting into this additional, it's really difficult to see if there even is a side yard line here. We defaulted to the surveyor's indication that there's really not a clear demarcation on this particular side.
So we're still looking at the same variant amount that, that hasn't changed with this discussion?
No.
As far, yeah, the, it's less than 200 square feet in size. So it could be within 10 feet of that rear lot line.
As long as the roof flies below 12.
Yes, exactly. And that was our determination that these two area variances would be required, plus site plan approval as well as a flood plain development permit.
Okay, so we're kind of step one in the process.
That's correct, because if there's not very, two area variances granted from this particular board, then there's no point in proceeding any further.
Right. Any other questions? While we have Bob with us here.
Have the neighbors been informed of, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I've talked to the Moscaus and the Alexanders and they both were fine with it. At some point, we were considering building a house and they were all okay with that as well on that side, but we've withdrawn that for now. But we talked to them about the shed and they were both fine with the shed.
The town notified the neighbors as part of its regular process, right?
Yeah. I believe so.
CJ. Jen could probably chime into that. I see her shaking her head, but yes, we mail notices as well as publish.
Yes, I did. I did mail those notices out and it was also published.
Great, thank you.
And have we gotten any comments via email or anything else that we should know about?
No comments via email.
None that I've received, other than the planning board did pass a motion recommending that the zoning board of appeals consider granting the area. zoning board of appeals consider granting the area variances, but that is not a binding recommendation upon you. It's just a courtesy.
Any any other questions of Bob? Were we ready to bring it back to discussion with just us? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Sorry, lost my shape. So Bob, thank you. Back to the board for discussion.
Put you in the waiting room in case something pops up. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I will.
Pete?
Yes.
For a second? Okay, so all those in favor, I'll call out names. Maureen Cowan?
Aye.
Richard Hayes?
Aye.
Peter Larson?
Aye.
Melanie Malone?
Aye.
Hi Judy Drake, aye. Okay, so back for board discussion.
I guess the main thing I I noticed there is there is a setback requirement, but we're against the railroad track right of way and it's not like we're going to have a neighbor here that's build a house five years from now. And so I kind of looked at it through that that filter. Plus it slid up against a bank where it's really fairly well hidden from view, at least from the land side.
And as CJ said, we do have the 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 kind of the recommendation from the planning board. So they sound like they would certainly be willing to entertain the site plan review process if we do approve the two variances.
Just to mention that we could read the recommendation as the board wishes. We included a printed version in the packet, but of course are happy to read that aloud as well. But site plan review is a use allowed by site plan review is still an allowed use. It's just then required to go through the site plan review process with the planning board.
Other comments, thoughts?
Like I said, when I was asking my questions, I realized the limitations of the property. And yet it seems to me that this building is rather big for that space. That's the only the only comment that I would make is is that and the site plan review probably will be very careful about the water level and the other problems that are the nature of that, because I think we did denied something similar south of here as it was trying to remember last summer, last fall, somebody wanted to build something along the shoreline. As you go down East Shore Drive almost into it's or the Village of Lansing. And we denied that. And I don't remember why, but I think it had some similar characteristics.
They wanted to add on to the building they already have. And I think our recommendation was that they could add outside outside storage.
Outside storage, which it's still a possibility with this. So I'm kind of I have some concerns about it.
Regarding the site plan, just to speak with the two more in concern would be we would essentially pair the floodplain development permit application along with the site plan. Because we're we then refer that to the towns engineers who provide very specific guidance on how a structure of this nature would need to be secured. Obviously, being in the floodplain, we don't want structures washing out in the event of a flood. And so that I think it will be frankly, the pickiest part of the application. That said, they did provide an elevation certificate. And so that will be reviewed by the town engineers, sort of as part of site plan review, but also as an independent floodplain development permit application as well.
Rick or Mary, any comments?
Well, I I agree with Pete. As far as, you know, with that space and the fact that it's going to be below the railroad tracks. Technically, it's really going to be hidden in there. And I don't see where it's, you know, really gonna I think if the neighbors on either side, it's not going to affect them. And yet they still can get, you know, get it in that space. I I don't, I feel, you know, I mean, it's doable. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Mary, did you want to add anything?
Just that I have to agree with Rick on this with the neighbors. I mean, if it's not an eyesore and it's going to enhance the property, you know, I'm all for it. I think they've done their dual diligence of, you know, really thinking about the property of how they can, you know, make it usable for their family. And without like interrupting anybody's piece of enjoyment on each side.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Melanie.
I don't know if you can hear me well. I was wondering, I can't read what is the distance from the shed to the lake? How how close is the shed to the lake?
I could share my screen and we could bring up that site plan again here because it shows a couple of different measurements there. This is where we do the measurement from the lakes, from the lake, from the mean high watermark. So that's seven feet here. And then there's also, it shows approximately three feet from this break wall here. But this is from where we measure from as far as setbacks.
Ten feet from the water.
No, seven.
Seven feet, yeah.
Seven feet from the water. Okay. Pretty close.
Okay. Any other discussion that we want to have before we consider consider this?
I think I heard something about precedent. I'm going to go with that. Yeah, generally speaking, zoning board decisions only set precedence in the event that they are identical situations. For instance, the same exact sized structure and placed on a very similar property or almost the exact same property. Then basically all of the same kind of background conditions for the variance or for the request for variance would have to apply for this to be able to set precedent. No, is the short answer.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do people feel like we're ready to look at the resolution? Yes. And CJ, I only have to read from the now therefore, right?
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
So we are considering the area variance for Robert Marcus's property on two hundred Cedar Cove. So now therefore be it the result, the town of Lansing zoning board of appeals hereby makes the following findings with respect to the specific criteria of area variance is set forth in town law section two sixty seven dash B. So our question's A, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance?
No, no.
No. Okay, so it looks like we're pretty much on no. This is kind of traditionally found in the lakefront area that there are these kind of structures close to the lake. Does that sound about right?
So you're saying this is in a court or at least in substantial agreement with the surrounding conditions or the physical aspects of existing surrounding properties on the lake? That what I'm hearing?
Sounds great.
I I don't think there are sheds next to him. But that's okay. There are sheds on the on the waterfront, but not next to him.
Right.
Not next to his property. I think I don't think it's going to make a negative impact on the properties or the neighborhood. I think it'll be fine.
So we'll go on to B, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. I would say he's tried to look at at different avenues.
I think the shed was his way of trying to achieve all of his goals with, you know, getting everything covered and protected from the elements.
Without moving the shed to the north end of the property, which if he were taking down the other shed, that might have been a feasible solution.
But yeah, and even even so, I to meet that thirty foot lake setback, you would have had to be into the hill with it and do a lot of earthwork, I think.
Well, he might have had to take down some shrubs from what I could tell. I don't think his seawall does not extend that far.
Yeah.
I think that was the biggest issue.
Right. He's also trying to protect the investment that he's making.
Right. So I'd say no to that one, too. He's explored all the options.
Yep.
Okay. Is everybody okay with no?
Yeah, so you don't think that there was any land they could have acquired and there's no way that this particular project could be redesigned in a way that would achieve that benefit otherwise.
Well, I think I asked him those questions about a narrower dwelling. And he didn't think he could fit all of his watercraft in a narrower dwelling.
Struct narrower structure.
That's the wrong, wrong word.
No, no worries. Just wanted to be clear that this is not a habitable.
Right, right, right. So given that, it seems like he didn't have any other option. Given how many pieces of watercraft he wants to store.
And he did look at options that were less expensive than this one to consider, so. Okay, we good there? See whether the requested area variance is substantial?
Yes.
Yeah, it really is.
Definitely substantial.
Yeah, it's kind of extremely if you put it into percentages, so absolutely. Should we have a however that goes with that? Yes, or just leave it as yes? They're just due to regular limitations of where he's looking to put the shed that there is pretty hard to put any anything there, really.
Your discretion.
Okay. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? I would say no.
I think I think I want to leave that one up to the review, the next review. I don't know the answer to that.
I think we have to answer it, though.
Yeah, probably.
Typically, in regards to either positive impacts or negative impacts on wetlands or environmentally sensitive lands of any kind, you certainly could make an argument that Cuba Lake is a sensitive area. The town does require that floodplain, a development permit and that will require the structure to be secured, should it be allowed to be in place.
So.
So could we say no, but with the caveat that this is going to be looked at further by the planning board?
And the town engineer.
And yeah.
That could be a rationale for why you would think at this point that it would not have an adverse effect.
Okay. It's everybody okay with no?
With a caveat attached.
With the, yep, however, the evaluated by the planning board and town engineer.
Yes.
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. This is the one we always have trouble with, so.
Well, the limitations are there. But his choice of storage and number of vehicles are 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 his choice. So I don't know how to answer that.
They always seem self-created to me, but I guess there's an alternate definition of it that I don't understand.
Any other comments, Melanie or Rick?
Well, I can't see, I mean, I'm not seeing it was self-created. I mean, it is what it is, the you know, with the railroad being right behind it, you know, it kind of gives, you know, makes it gives them limitations to what they can do with that property to begin with. So, I mean, I think that, you know, they're trying to get get it where they feel you know, comfortable having it and, you know, hopefully they you know, for them, they can get it there, so.
And Melanie, you typed in self-created. A lot has not changed since he purchased it.
This is a question kind of like substantiality. It's much more subjective perhaps than the than the other three criteria by which you're reviewing, but mostly plays a prominent role for applicants who perhaps engaged in behavior that was contrary to the zoning or took it upon themselves to build something and then ask for forgiveness later.
So so in that case, is the right answer?
I believe that's what we learned in some of the trainings, I would say.
No, right. No right or wrong answer here. It's a very subjective, kind of like the substantiality question. There's a lot of latitude of your discussion here.
Okay. So determination based on the above factors. It's hereby determined by the town of Lansing zoning board of appeals that the following area variance is granted or denied?
Granted.
I would say granted.
Yes.
Granted.
Okay. With any conditions here I've stated, if any, it being further found and determined that one, the benefit of the applicant outweighs any potential negative impacts or detriment to the neighborhood or community. And two, such area variances, the minimum necessary to adequate grant relief and at the same time preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the safe safety and welfare of the community. Is there any specific conditions that we want to list with this variance, variances?
Possibly just satisfaction of the further review that's going to happen regarding what floodplain and something else?
Engineer.
Yes, that would be a site plan approval by the planning board. And that would be approval of the floodplain development permit by the local floodplain administrator, which is me, in cooperation with the town engineers of course.
Right. Okay. So with that condition, the vote of the foregoing decision determinations and resolutions of the town of Lansing zoning board of appeals was as follows. Somebody would like to move the, this resolution of granting?
I shall move.
Thank you. Sir second, Melanie? So we'll do a vote for that. Any other discussion before we go to vote? Okay. Maureen Cowan?
Aye.
Richard Hayes?
Aye.
Melanie Malone? She typed in aye. Mary Stowe? Nope. No, this is Pete Larson.
Aye.
Okay. And I'm aye. Okay. So at this point we have granted the variances as requested. Okay. Any, nothing else with that? Right CJ?
Um, no, no.
Okay. Okay. So further on our agenda, any other business that we need to talk about? And CJ did send out something today regarding training and we have an option on the training. Of course, hopefully you all remember that we have some mandatory training that we have to do, which is sexual harassment, violence in the workplace, looks like right to know and hazmat is being added this year. And we have two options. One is to go on to HERMA, which is our workmen's comp company and do their online training individually, all on our own. Or some kind of something where we're doing it all together. I don't know CJ, if you can explain that one a little bit more.
Yeah. Not sure that I fully understand, but the message from Charmaine was if we all watch the video together, for some reason it's faster. It's only 90 minutes, I guess. Versus doing the individual trainings on their own. And I can send more information on this, but essentially if you do each course by yourself, there's quizzes or something at home that you would have to take to move on to the next one. Okay, you're just familiar with this one versus if we all just took, say, a meeting, say the next meeting and just watched the video, then you would all be essentially in compliance with the the litany of training pieces that Judy just went into.
Is, is it the same thing that we just did? Like six months ago or whenever it was?
Yes, that was a year ago, if you can believe it.
That was tons of fun.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we got to do it every year. It's a state requirement, especially with the sexual harassment. And I think the violence in the workplace aspect is important, just on the fact that we don't always have pleasant people who want to come meet with us. So it's good for us to keep violence in the workplace in mind. I am a little confused over the right to know and hazmat aspect of why we have to do those, but that's all right.
Did that email come out today?
Yes.
I only just sent it to Judy to see if there was any preferences about the method of training or when you wanted to have it and, you know, just kind of putting in some questions.
I like being able to do it on my own time because it's flexible. You know, if I want to do it in the middle of the day, I can do that. But I if everybody else wants to do it together, I'm fine with that too.
I'm okay with either one.
Yeah, I'm flexible. I can go either way.
Me too.
I don't care. I have to teach the class too.
You should get a hundred on the test then.
So yeah, I don't, I mean, it's, it's summertime. I think they want us to have it done by, before Labor Day, right? By, by September 1st, she, she would like to have it done. Do we have any idea if we're going to be coming together in August for a meeting or not or?
Hard to say. Sometimes requests come in at the very last moments. But I do have a standing appointment on the calendar for Tuesday, August 11th at 6:30. If you wish to do the training then, and if you'd like to think about it, we don't have to decide right now. We could follow up with you in a week or so and see, see what works for everybody if you'd like. That's fine too. Just wanted to make sure I mentioned it.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. What do people think? We have August 11th. Does everybody have it in their calendar? We could come together, especially if it's only going to be an hour and a half presentation. It sounds online, we would have to go through four little, four different subcategories to, to get through the training online. So why don't we right now kind of table it? And if it sounds like maybe we have something short on the 11th, maybe we could add it in to that. I would like to ask Charmaine about the, the two other topics of why we have to do those. And if we have a short topic, maybe we can add the training in. I know I hate to do that in the summertime, but if we come back at that point and we don't want to, then we still have a couple of weeks to try to get the training done on our own. How's that?
That's
great.
Sound okay?
Okay. I put it on the calendar to follow up with you the week of the 27th.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else that needs to come? CJ, are there any other trainings that we should be aware of to make sure that we get our training hours in? There's the, the one aspect that we have to do that the town board passed as a local law or resolution that we have to have the CDRC training. Again, they weren't calling it that, but something like that is something being set up for us to be able to get that criteria or requirement in?
You know, that's a good question and I can follow up. Sue was really good about keeping up all of the training. And as you know, she's in Missouri now, so we're trying to regroup on some of those fronts. So I have a call with her on Friday morning and I'll see what she's got in terms of hours for each of you and then what we have set up possibly for trainings coming up.
Yeah. Knowing our hours that we have banked would be good.
Okay. Yep, absolutely. We can get some numbers on that and that's something Jen or Sue might be able to help with.
Thank you.
I know there was a class on the 12th. It's seven o'clock. It's using online resources. It was being held up in Auburn. I signed up for it a long time ago, but the other ones I was going to take got canceled. But I don't know if this one, if they're doing it yet.
Yeah, I can take a look. New York State Department of State does have a training calendar, but I'm not sure how up to date they're keeping it.
Right. Okay. Just, yeah, if you could kind of send out an email to a CJ so we know where everybody's at and who needs to get some training in before the end of the year. And definitely if something's going to get set up for that one CDRC or whoever's going to be providing it.
Okay.
Would be helpful to know.
Yep, absolutely. We'll do.
Good. Okay. Is anybody have anything else? Okay. If not, would somebody like to?
I have one last thing I'd like. I have one, just one last thing I'd like to say. There was a question, a really good question about precedent that I didn't necessarily want to get into during the, the hearing itself, but there should be substantial, extremely high degree of similarity between applications to be able to set precedent. So the size of the structures built, the zoning on the lot, the existing bulk and area requirements in the zoning surrounding natural features. What kind of other variances there were, the, whether the lots were vacant, the exact same size of the parcels, I mean, down to the exact same thing. So I just wanted to clarify that a bit more.
That's good to know because I, I know that's something that we've always been fearful of in the past. So good to know that criteria.
Right. Yeah. And I'm hoping to, as part of some of the work we want to do with mapping is to, you know, map all of our previous area variances. So we'll be able to have that kind of cross referencing for the board. It's on my wishlist anyway. So someday.
That would be great because otherwise our memory, especially since we have a pretty new board is probably not the greatest reference of what we've done in the past. So unless Lynn tells us that we did something. All right. So somebody like to move for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Rick. Somebody second? I think we're good. All right. Thank you all and have a great July.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone. Have a great summer of July. Yeah.
Bye bye.